This conference will now be recorded.
All right, it's only being ordered at 7:09.
Oh, I know that's.
Seven oh one.
Yeah.
We got Board Member Kathy Wright here.
Here.
Who else is on the line?
Paula.
Paula's online.
Dan, can you unmute? Am I saying muted or?
They muted themselves.
Is anybody else, any other board members present online? Besides Paula?
No.
No other board members?
Hey, Dan.
Yes.
This is Paula.
Yes.
I'm on the phone right now. For some reason, I cannot get my computer audio turned on. What I'm doing wrong, but I can't, I can't get any sound. So I guess I'll stay on the phone.
Is your volume all the way down maybe?
My volume, no.
Hmm.
I've checked, it's right in the middle.
But you have the screen where like, can you see our screen if we want to display something to you, Paula?
Yeah, I can see everything. I just can't, I just can't get my, I can't get my microphone turned on because it says that my audio, my computer speakers are not working. My audio's not working. But my speaker, but it shows that my speakers are on. So I don't know what's up.
But we can hear you fine.
Let's see Kathy here now, present.
So I think what I'll do is jump off the, jump off the, go to meeting thing, thingamajig. So as not to cause a problem with anything. I don't know if it would or not, but.
I don't think you're causing any problem.
No, I, I'd stay on if I was you, Paula, because we're, Erin's going to have some graphs to show you after a bit.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, yeah.
You bet.
So Dr. Hill's not.
She said she was, would be on.
Okay, well.
So we've got Kathy Wright, Paula, Kathy Hill, and Dr. Jackson.
Is Kathy Hill able to hear us? Kathy Hill, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So could we move it to?
Executive session.
I might as well go into executive session.
Kathy Wright has moved to go into executive session. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second this.
Paula, seconded. Need a roll call vote. Kathy Wright?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Paula?
Yeah.
And Dr. Jackson, yes. Motion to go out of executive session somewhere. Kathy Wright's moved to go out of this executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Cindy.
Okay, so moved in second to go out of this executive session. We'll have a roll call vote. Kathy Wright on? Kathy Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Hills?
Aye.
Paula?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was on mute, yes.
Right, go out of executive session. Okay, Dr. Jackson, unanimous, go out of executive session. We didn't have people holding in there, they can just now call it.
They're still holding.
They're still holding.
Please enter the conference number followed by the pound key.
No, they can't, Paula.
Thank you.
Does it have that there?
Followed by the pound key. If you do not have a bid number, just press.
Erin's first to ask, Dan's.
There are three other persons in this conference.
Okay, we're going to start regular session, 7:55. All board members are either present person or online.
Okay, when we met a couple of weeks ago, this Mary Jo Byrne, Director of the Health Department, we discussed having a special session since this evening on the 12th to just kind of do an update, report on how COVID was, what was going on with COVID in our county. So I have some data to share with the board and just an update of what's been going on. But first off, I've been asked to, Erin Sanders, our Epi Specialist, to go through some epidemiology data. And I believe, Erin, you're, you're on the, on the meeting there, is that correct?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and we have your slides up on the screen, so you can go ahead.
Are those members participating by going to the meeting able to see the screen?
No.
No.
We're going to try to fix that.
Okay, now we can. Yes.
Sorry about that.
Okay. This is Erin with the Platte County Health Department. So as of today, we've had 46 total cases reported in Platte County, not including the Kansas City cases. Kansas City's numbers as of today are 41 cases, so that means 87 for the total in Platte County. We've had 15 cases reported in the last two weeks, so since April 28th. Of these cases, two of them have been associated with the Triumph Foods outbreak. And then we've also had six cases associated with Riverside Nursing Home and Rehab. And then we've had four additional cases that have known exposures to other confirmed cases, whether it's at a workplace or with, among family members or something like that. So that's at least good that we have a known source for many of the cases that we've had reported in the last couple of weeks. Although obviously the outbreaks are not good as we move forward, so. Dan, do you want to move to the next one?
Sorry, Erin.
That's okay.
The screen is locked up.
Technology, it's great when it works.
Well, I can start talking through the next slide. And we've had some questions about hospitalization. So of our 46 cases to date, nine have been hospitalized. Five of those have been discharged. And the four were still hospitalized as of the last time we spoke to the patient and to determine hospitalization status. So, and those hospitalizations have ranged from people in their twenties to in their eighties. So haven't had a lot of hospitalizations. Again, those have all been since March. But about 20% of our cases have been hospitalized. And then we've had zero deaths reported in Platte County residents so far. In the region, we've had about 164 deaths reported in Kansas City. According to Mark, I think that was a number updated yesterday. And that includes the nine counties in the, in the area as well as Kansas City, Missouri.
Seems odd.
There you go, it's working again.
Did you want me to go back to the slide, Erin?
Um, just a second, if you want to. I think I said most of the things out loud, but in case they want to see the numbers.
Okay, I will do that, hang on just a moment.
Hey Erin, this is Paula. Could I ask you a real quick question?
Uh huh.
It is, could you explain to me the reasoning behind only counting half the cases that are actually in Platte County? I know you make distinction between cases in Platte County and cases in Platte County but in Kansas City.
Yes.
Can you, why, why do we do that?
So the reason is that the people who live in Kansas City, Missouri, those cases are reported to the Kansas City, Missouri Health Department. So they're the ones who do the investigation and gather all the data. And so we don't have access to that data directly for those Kansas City cases that are in Platte County. Because that's something Kansas City, Missouri Health Department owns essentially.
But they are Platte County cases. They are cases that are in Platte County and.
Yes, yes. We just do our own investigation.
I wouldn't want to mislead anybody by saying we only had 46 cases in Platte County when in fact we had 80 something.
Yes, so of the 40, probably, probably the better way to say is of the 46 Platte County cases not in Kansas City that are reported to the Platte County Health Department, that's kind of how we would define it. But that is how, the number of cases we have not in Kansas City city limits in Platte County.
Yeah, I think it's always important to talk about the total number of cases in Platte County because they are Platte County cases. That's all, thanks.
Yeah.
We currently are at 87 cases in, in the county, including Kansas City cases.
Right, thanks.
And this is Mary Jo, Paula. When the Kansas City Health Department on their website, how they depict their numbers, they also break them out into counties, you know, Platte, Clay, Cass, Jackson County, they break them up, you know, with those parameters and jurisdictions. So, but I agree with what you're saying, you know, when we are talking about what's within the borders of Platte County, it's all the numbers, so.
Right, right, thanks.
Sure, thanks for the question. Erin, question.
Want to move to the next slide again?
Okay, I think I want just a moment.
Okay. And then on this next slide, we'll show rates. And then so that's a good idea of how we compare to other regions, other counties and the Kansas City, Missouri Health Department as far as looking at a rate in the population. And again, I think going to your point, Paula, sometimes people think that we have not that many cases, but we take into consideration our population. We actually do measure up to some of the other local jurisdictions. So you can see, luckily, we do not have the cases that are in Leavenworth and Wyandotte Counties with the large outbreaks that they've had there. Although I can say that we've had residents affected by those outbreaks. And so it's, again, it's an indication that diseases do not end at county lines or city lines for that matter. And so our rates are about 80 per 100,000 persons according to the data from yesterday from Mark. And that, it doesn't include the KC cases. Kansas City, Missouri is about almost double as far as the rate goes. And then Johnson and Jackson County are just a little bit higher than us. We're pretty on par with Clay County when you're looking at overall rates of cases, so.
About Leavenworth cases, that's 1.2. That's 1,200 cases per 100,000, is that what that says?
Yes, that's correct. I believe a lot of that is related to their outbreak at Lansing prison facility.
All right.
Where's a bunch of prisons over there?
And Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, these, these cases that are, these are cases that are laboratory confirmed, reported cases. The IMHE is, estimates about 4,000 cases in Platte County. Have you seen that?
No, uh uh.
There is a link on our website to it and I, I will pull that up for the board. But it is a model, you know, these, I just think it's, as we all know, not it. Testing hasn't occurred yet. Our capacity is there. But I think it is important to point out that these are reported cases, laboratory confirmed cases.
Right, and I think a good indicator is the Triumph Plant where they had hundreds of cases and a large vast majority of them were asymptomatic. So that is an indicator that there are probably cases going undiagnosed because they haven't, we haven't tested everybody like they tested everyone at the Triumph Plant. Although again, that's a place where they've been in close contact with each other. So there's probably more transmission going around in that plant than in your normal community. But then it is a good indicator that there's probably lots of asymptomatic people who just aren't getting tested and do not show up in these numbers. So we don't know how many people that is exactly, but we do know that there's quite a few unreported cases.
And Erin, this is Mary Jo again, from an epidemiology perspective, it's recommended that even if you're asymptomatic and test positive, you still need to isolate yourself for 10 days, is that correct?
Correct, yes, that's according to CDC guidelines.
And these are 14 days.
So it's a 10. 10 days.
Change.
Erin, Dr. Jackson.
Dr. Hill's from 14 to 10?
No, the 14 is actually the quarantine period, so that's always been, so for people who've been exposed, that's how long they have to stay quarantined. The isolation date has, actually was seven days up until about a week or two ago. And then they extended that to 10 days based on new data that the CDC, studies the CDC had done, so.
Erin, I want to correct myself, that what I said earlier about the number of cases that is for, that is not true. There's, the model is, the IMHE model, that's Missouri data. Apologize for that.
Okay.
I want to do your last slide then, Erin.
Sure.
Can you see it?
Okay, this is something, yeah, this is something we've been getting a lot of questions about. And it's actually, which is our positivity rate, how many tests we've done, have been done on Platte County residents and how many of those have been positive, which is one of the, one of the things that the national level, they recommend we look at as sort of a gating criteria. And up until maybe a week ago, we had no idea how many tests were being administered in Platte County residents. Those negative test numbers were not something that was being given to us by the state health department. And so they just recently started sending us that data daily. And we started to go through it and look at that. And one thing we do know about this data that's sort of a caveat, it's something a lot of epidemiologists in the region, we've been discussed, is that it's not a good indicator of the total tests done. We know that there's, it's an underestimate because we've been told by the state health department that many of the negative test results come in without a patient address. And they do not have the time to run down a patient address for everyone. So those tests never get assigned to a county. So we have reported to us that as of 5/11, we've had 590 negative COVID-19 test results have been reported in Platte County residents and that since March. But we know that that's probably an underestimate of the real number. But in these graphs, you see the total testing by week is on the graph on the left. And we've included positives in the orange there and negatives in blue. And so testing has overall seemed to gone up. In Week 19, which would have been last, this last week, that is a bit down. I think that's probably because there's been a delay in some of that reporting. Some of those negative results probably aren't back yet and haven't been recorded by the state. They sent over to us. So I think that number will probably be increased as this week's reports come in and we get a better idea of just how many cases were reported or tested last week, so. And then our percent positivity was a bit high of over 15, about 15% in mid-March when testing first started. And probably partly because people were only able to get a test if they were really definitely showing symptoms at that point in time. And since then, it has dropped to about 4% as of the Epi Week 18, which would have been the week before last. So probably the week starting April 26th. And then this past week, like I said, we've had quite a few positives and I don't think we've gotten all the negative test results back. So that number is at 15% test positivity for this past week. But I think that will probably change as we get more negative results in that data.
So all the positive results have definitely been reported already?
Yes, so we.
Missing?
No, so positives because obviously we have to do a public health follow-up and case investigation. Those definitely do get reported. We definitely do track down an address on all those people and contact them. So those are getting reported to us. As soon as they get, well, as soon as the results come back and they get through the state health department and get sent to us. So those are definite numbers that we can say, at least for people who are confirmed laboratory positive.
Do you think that number, percentage, will go down as you get more negatives? Or you think it's going to stay the same?
For Week 19, I think it probably will go down a bit, so we'll, we'll see. Like you can tell that Week 19 had about half the tests done as Week 18. And I, I think that that's probably just an indication of delay in reporting and not an actual decrease in testing, so. But we'll, we'll see as more data comes in.
Was Week 16 a week when we were doing more stay at home?
I think that was, yeah, during stay at home of around beginning of April.
Okay, stay at home. Thank you, Erin.
Thanks, Erin.
You're welcome.
Well, as I said at the start, you know, we just, I'm just wanting to kind of go over everything that's happened since the, the last time we met two weeks ago. So you all are aware, we're doing testing actually at the Health Department in Parkville. So since the beginning of March, we've, we have performed 387 tests at the Parkville facility. And we've, nine positives have resulted from those testing. And it's, that happens Monday through Friday, two to three hours a day, kind of depending on the, on the need and the symptom checker tool, this other website, that's how people get invited for that testing, so.
So the person has to have some symptom before they can be tested?
No, we're doing.
We're all in there getting tested.
We're doing, well, we're doing asymptomatic and symptomatic testing, but you do have to fill out the symptom checker tool. It's just a methodology so we can.
Even if you have no symptoms, you fill out that tool?
Yes.
Mary Jo, this is Kathy Hill, I've got a question for you. Do they have to be a Platte County resident? Is it regardless of whether they're in the Kansas City area or the non-Kansas City part of Platte County to get those tests?
We've made a few exceptions to that. Like say, for example, I got a call from a banker here in town that had an employee that was getting ready to do a little travel somewhere. They don't live in Platte County, but he couldn't get testing in the county of his residence. So, you know, he works in Platte County, has the capability of spreading the disease at the other bank employees that he works closely with. So, you know, we'll make exceptions like that. But yes, even if they live in Kansas City, Platte County, we're, we're serving them as well, so. And then I think most of you probably know from news reports or whatever, we had a long-term care facility in Riverside that had a positive, one positive case that was identified, I think by us, maybe 6 o'clock in the evening. And I just want to brag on our staff a little bit, in less than 24 hours. So by noon the next day, we already had a system set up to test all of their employees because it's a long-term care facility, someone brought it in into them. You know, these folks weren't out and about in the community. So due to this donated testing that we've received, that I talked to the board about by these generous business owners of Platte County, I was able to make a call to KU Lab and they actually sent us 300 additional tests above and beyond what we get on a weekly basis. And sent a staff member over there. And our staff went onsite to the long-term care facility that afternoon. So 6 o'clock that evening, we found out about a positive resident. And that the following afternoon, our staff was onsite doing testing of their staff members. And then our staff kind of gave some direction to the staff at the long-term care facility to test their own residents with these tests. And our staff then returned there the next morning at 5 o'clock in the morning, so. And so our nursing staff went there at 5 o'clock the next morning and tested another round, another shift of the employees that were coming in. So we worked with the Riverside Fire Department, you know, provided a tent for us for protection and lighting and everything. It's just, was really good community collaboration that we pulled that all off. And I told the administrator, we worked with him very closely. He was very cooperative and grateful. We found out from our Northwest Epi Specialist that another long-term care facility in another county had to do testing on their staff and residents. It cost them $34,000 and we pulled this all off totally for free. We did it for free, KU did the testing for free and the test kits for free. So I think that's pretty.
We're sitting on our behalf, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So out of that long-term care facility though, Erin kind of mentioned it a little bit, six residents now have tested positive and they've had four staff members that have tested positive. So that's why it's very, was very important for us to get in there in a very timely fashion to prevent any further spread and not allow those, those staff members to come back around the high-risk population there, so.
Mary Jo, it's Kathy Hill again, I'm sorry. I have another question. How many long-term care facilities do we have in Platte County? And have any of the others requested to be tested?
We have four, I believe, four facilities. And we haven't heard from any of the rest of them that they're wanting any testing done. But that's something that we could, you know, sure make happen. And this one is one of the largest ones that we have in the county. I believe they had 100 and, less than 130 residents. And they had, Angela, if you're on here, I believe they said they have 170 employees, is that correct?
Yeah, I think the last were like 126 residents and 175 employees. But they have a lot of PRN employees.
And we haven't, haven't received all the test results back from the residents, is that correct?
That is correct. We just got quite a few back tonight and they had an additional two positive. We're waiting on just a handful. We're pretty close to being done with the residents.
So how many residents total are positive?
Um, we started, eight, is that right? How many, maybe?
Yes, six. Six was the previous report, so now we have eight, that's about it.
And those have not been technically reported, correct, Erin?
No, the numbers I had are from about 6:00 PM today. So I'm not sure, Angela, when those positive results came back, probably just recently. So not quite yet.
Okay. Do the four employees, is it correct, they, none of the four live in Platte County? So they would not be counted in Platte County, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
So there's an article in the paper about something in Briar Street, was that in Kansas City? And not us?
That's Kansas City, that's correct. Is there a nursing?
Mary Jo?
Yes, please, Paula?
I just wanted to say, Kathy Hill, thank you for asking that question. Mary Jo and I had just a brief conversation about this earlier, I don't know, maybe last week, I don't know. Anyway, I think it might be smart on our part to at least offer, I know, I guess we can't insist that they accept, accept it, the testing. But we might be doing everyone a good favor by testing all of our nursing homes because we know that their nursing homes are hotspots. And we also know that the staff that are in those nursing homes leave. And we also know that the staff that are in those nursing homes leave and go back to their families and into the community and whatever. So it might be, it might be a smart thing for us to consider testing all the nursing homes in Platte County.
Sure. Good suggestion. We'll, we'll make that offer available to them. Make contact with them tomorrow. So, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Paula and I think that's kind of where I was leading to after listening to several communications the last several days on the national level with the nursing homes being the hotspots. Maybe we should be proactive instead of reactive. I know that the, the test results can change from day to day. So that's the other thing we need to look at, but offering it to the nursing homes and their employees might be, and let them make the call, might be a better option.
And like the facility in Riverside and Angela, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the health department did the testing of the staff and then the staff at the facility did the testing of the residents. So we could team up like that again, I think would be a good approach.
Good suggestion.
Thing, any way we can get it done to benefit everyone is a, is a great plan. And I think for the most part, I'm going to guess the nursing homes are probably going to be fairly receptive because that's not probably something they, you know, would be able to either afford or figure out on their own. So I think we'd be doing a, a good service to them and to the community by doing that.
I agree. I agree. The next update I want to give to the board was that there is a, I'll just say a food packaging plant in Platte County that has reached out to the State Department of Health and they have over 500 employees between their corporate office and then their packaging plant that they would like their employees all tested. So, you know, we don't have any capability for that type of volume. So the State Department of Health has been working with the Platte County Health Department as well as we've reached out to St. Luke's to see if, you know, they can provide the staff to, to do the testing and the facility is willing to pay for all of that. But what our responsibility will be, this is in Platte County, but in Platte County, Kansas City. So between, as we just discussed earlier, since we shared jurisdictions, that will be any residents in Platte County, we will need to follow up with them if there are positives that result from that. And then Kansas City will deal with the Kansas City residents. So Another thing I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, I'm sure you've all heard on the news as well, but the whole scenario with, you know, children, they've done a lot of research and it's been discovered in New York and some in California and I think in Alabama that there's 93 cases of what they're calling pediatric multi-system inflammatory syndrome. And it is symptoms similar to the Kawasaki disease. And there has actually been three deaths that have been associated with this syndrome. So a doctor that was on a call I was on yesterday said, you know, there's just so much yet that we have to, to learn about this virus. I think we all need to remember that. And we haven't had any reports of this type of syndrome that I'm aware of in the state of Missouri, but just bear some awareness. So they, the officials have said that the majority of the patients, these children have tested negative for the novel coronavirus, but they were positive for the antibodies. So they didn't have, they were positive for coronavirus at the time they developed these escalating symptoms, but they had had it in their bodies, what that indicated. So just more, more things to watch for as we move forward. I did want to update the board as Dan was talking and I'm going to talk a little bit about gating criteria as well, but one of those gating criteria to move from one step to the next in our plan is that we have adequate contact tracing. And Erin, who you heard from just earlier, has done an excellent job of training up one of our full-time nurses. And she's, we've also brought back a RN that used to work for us in communicable disease and she's working for us on a PRN basis, helping Erin several hours a week to assist with that contact tracing. And then has, she's started training up two of our health educators, one's full-time and one's three-quarter time. So we're trying to get geared up so that we have some capability to do additional contact tracing as we relax the restrictions. We have to have that in place behind the scenes. So we've got that started. And then moving on to the gating criteria, one of the things that they've talked to us about is that we need to have public health capacity to do just what I was referring to. And the numbers that they've given is that you should have 30 contact tracers, so 30 people to do contact tracing for every 100,000 population. So Platte County that we have jurisdiction over has half of that. So that would mean we would need 15 people, you know, to do this adequate contact tracing. And all of us, health directors have said, well, nobody can hire that many people and then wait, you know, and have them trained up, ready to go. So today on the MACG call, Mid-Americo Regional Council let us know that they are doing, now it might have been on a call yesterday, I'm on mini calls, but anyway, the Mid-Americo Regional Council is pulling together a contact tracing labor pool. So I thought that was very creative so that they would have a pool of people that would be trained up so that we could all draw from that pool as we need it moving forward. So
Do you have to, do they have to meet the person face to face?
No. It's just, it's just a phone call that is done to determine who they've been around, where they've been, you know, those types of things. And then the other, one of the gating criteria for moving forward is hospital capacity to handle, capability to handle surge capacity if increased COVID-19 cases happen in the hospital. So the hospitals reported out today that they're now scheduling elective procedures and surgeries, you know, to sustain them financially. And so that's a good thing as far as hospital financing goes, but that does reduce their surge capacity, but they would still have, have some capability there. And then adequate PPE within the healthcare system is another benchmark and hospitals reported today that their PPE reserves are better, but supply chains still remain limited. So it's, it's improving, so that's good news. And then robust testing available throughout your community. We've, we've talked about that tonight, how we have additional testing available, hospitals do as well. But one of the benchmarks were that you should be able to test 10% of your population. So our 50,000 that are, once again, in our jurisdiction, that would be, you know, that we could test 5,000. So I don't believe we're there in the region yet, but we're moving, moving in a positive direction, so.
Yeah, but that's such a floating number.
Right.
Because you test them today, they get it tomorrow.
Yeah, we tested people, I mean, I know people have tested three, three or four times.
Well, we actually have a gentleman, he's in his 80s, that he was hospitalized and his family member gave me permission to use his statistics. He is 88 and he was hospitalized for over three weeks waiting to turn negative. And he's now approaching 60 days since he was diagnosed and is still testing positive. He's had 14 tests and he continues to show positive. So he's still isolating within his home, staying away from, from his wife who lives at the house with him, so.
And she's okay? I mean, they've been testing her outside.
Yeah, yeah. So, so far you've done a very good job of staying apart, so. And then I did email the board, members who are not in attendance and those who are here, there's, Mark has done a great job of creating what they call a crosswalk to compare all of us jurisdictions and the Kansas City metro of Kansas and Missouri so that you can see how we in Platte County compare with our initial phase of reopening with other jurisdictions and as well as the state of Missouri and the state of Kansas. So it's just a big document for your reference so that you can see there's been some comments made that we are much stricter here in Platte County than other jurisdictions. And I think this shows that we're really, we are operating pretty much in line. And as we've talked, it's, you know, the, the virus knows no jurisdictional boundaries so that the closer we can all be as we approach the opening, the better. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Any questions about anything that I've said? If not, I'm going to turn it over to Dan to talk about some conversation that we've had with, in regards to youth sports. Dan, you think that?
The hot button issue for the week is definitely youth sports. We've received quite a few comments through both the advisory group and Mary Jo has received some direct emails. So based on that, we have taken a close look and are comparing what's happening in other jurisdictions around us. Our understanding is that Kansas City, Missouri, the Director of Health in Kansas City has been directed by the mayor to develop a plan to begin youth sports on May 15th. So in order to remain consistent and because half of our population is in Kansas City as, as are, I don't know what the percentage is, but a lot of our youth facilities or sports facilities are in Kansas City in Platte County. So as best we can to remain consistent, propose some changes to our COVID-19 response reopening and recovery plan. The, the majority of those changes are on pages eight and 10 of the plan and they are highlighted for the board. The changes are highlighted in yellow. But my recommendation is that beginning May 15th, that team sports may practice while observing physical distancing requirements, no physical contact. I'm sorry, that, that's actually, that section pertains to gyms and fitness regarding youth sports, beginning May 15th, sports venues and youth sports open for practice only while observing physical distancing requirements, no physical contact, minimize number of spectators and outdoor gatherings are limited to 50 people, which currently applies. There was also an addition in that section about youth sports and includes swimming pools. And this doesn't, the criteria doesn't change, pools may be open at 25% of bather load, but we did make, add some detail to explain what that means or how to calculate bather load. And so the calculation is there, total square feet of water surface area divided by 20 square feet per bather times 0.25 will give you the bather load limit under this particular step in the plan. Beginning on June 1st, under the current plan or under the proposed plan, I'm sorry, we're currently on version five, uh, four, version four. This proposal would be version five. And again, this is for the board's consideration. Sports venues and youth sports, this would be effective June 1st.
Where are you now?
We're currently in
I'm going to say it's
Phase two.
Page, is this going to be on page 10?
Page 10 is, is what I'm currently talking about. And this would be the, the next phase, which is currently scheduled to begin on June 1st. For youth sports and sports venues, youth sports may begin, may begin games while observing physical distancing requirements and minimizing physical contact. Outdoor gatherings would be limited to 50 people. Spectators are encouraged to bring their own seating. And then for swimming pools, the bather load would, or the number of persons in the pool would increase to 50% of bather load within the pool enclosure. The other changes are, in some cases, just semantics or they're really not significant. So one, one thing that is significant, you'll notice throughout the plan that I, there was a section in each step of phase two that were all residents and businesses and businesses has been crossed out because restaurants actually don't have the limitation based on square footage. Their limitation is based, based on spacing of at least six feet between, it says tables currently, that will be changed to persons. Tables, really you need to space them about 10 feet apart to get the physical distancing of people of six feet. So that, that nervage on page seven will be changed from tables to persons.
Dan, Ms. Mary Jo, is that consistent with like Kansas City, how they made, made some of their changes just recently?
That, that is consistent with Kansas City. It's also consistent with the state of Missouri. Clay County currently is still waiting until, I believe, June 1st to begin practice for youth sports. Did I understand that correctly?
We spoke to their director and they're, they're going to look at it, I believe, on June 1st, making some changes then.
We do, and in fact have received some, one of the major things that prompted this in addition to the comments was some excellent plans, reopening plans that some sports groups have submitted. One in particular was really good, but it gives very detailed, detailed plans on how they're going to implement the physical distancing requirements and how they're going to take care of the kids and the spectators. They're not going to open their concession stands. There's some very strict guidelines for where parents can be. But we certainly want all those team sports groups to, first of all, have a very thorough plan and to please submit that to us so that we can review it. And the important thing is, in this whole thing, is personal responsibility and corporate responsibility. And we really depend on these youth sports groups and all of our businesses to be responsible. And that has been, we've heard that from the very beginning, that a lot of folks believe that we need to just allow individuals and corporations to take responsibility and let the customers decide. Unfortunately, as you all know, too many people who claim that they are able to act responsibly then, then go out into the community and do just the opposite. So unfortunately, that's the reason we have to have these guidance, guidelines and guidance.
So can they not slide?
That, for practice, which would be starting May 15th to June 1st, we would that there be no contact. So sliding, they could practice sliding. Yeah, exactly. But they can't, yeah, but they can't practice like base stealing, for example, or holding, holding a runner on first base. That's something that can happen under the proposal, June 1st, but for practice should not happen. It should be limited to kind of drills that, where kids are separated, you know, the physical distance requirements are in place.
So this is, okay, you can make it team sports venues and youth sports open, is it true to say outdoor practice only? Are they going to be able to practice indoors?
The, the challenge with the delineation, and clearly, clearly we know that outdoor environments are safer than indoor environments when it comes to the spread of the virus. But the indoor facilities are already limited based on their square footage to, for larger facilities, 10% of their building capacity. Sorry, I lost my train of thought there. They're limited to 10% of the building's capacity. The large or small facilities are limited to 25, under 10,000 square feet are limited to 25% of the building, building occupancy limit is the word I'm looking for. Not capacity, but occupancy limit.
So in this thing though, you
So in this thing, though, you say, you know, for practice only, it doesn't say whether it's indoor or outdoor. Then he goes on down here saying the outdoor gatherings are limited to 50. He doesn't say anything about.
Yeah. And I can certainly add language to that, to and if the board would like to make a proposal about what they would like to live indoor, we can certainly do that. I think it could get bit cumbersome if we change it from that 10% or 10% of occupancy.
For an indoor, yes, only applies to baseball or other sports.
Really, it would apply to volleyball, baseball, swimming, soccer, gymnastics.
In this section, are we talking about all those things?
Really any team sport, yeah.
But you have, you have gyms and fitness centers.
Yeah.
That different than this?
Yeah, originally, or in the current face or version four, gyms and fitness centers were essentially the same applied about no team practice, but individual drills only. So that language has just been removed from the gyms and fitness because we thought that that would apply under the youth sports or team sports section. We just cover all of it.
There's no way it applies soccer to be distanced.
Yeah, soccer would, with practice, you can do some, some individual drills, but until June 1st, yeah, I agree, there's really a lot of, and baseball too, there's just no way to avoid physical contact playing under the rules of baseball, but rules can be modified. Sitting in the dugout, yeah, they'll be limited to three, three kids in the dugout, which would get kind of lonely for those three kids, but that's no sunflower seeds. Yeah.
That's all spelled out.
Yeah, very, that's all spelled out in the plan, and that's what we want. That's industry guidance.
Not in our plan, but in the plan that's
You said there'd be no concession stands.
No concession stands. Restrooms under the, starting June 1st would be provided, I believe, I I don't remember that specific. But they did talk about providing hand washing stations, or we had that discussion. Hand washing, washing stations throughout the complex, the portable type. So part of the challenges of having restrooms open is the the cleaning. Yeah, it is a big, it is definitely a big challenge.
So what are they going to do?
I, I would, what I would recommend, and we can certainly add to the plan, is that they have a person stationed near the restroom cleaning in on a routine basis. And they also, the plan we saw from the sports league that sent the very detailed plan are also collecting names of all of the participants as well as their contact information to help us in that we need to do contact tracing. But yeah, I would, they do address cleaning very thoroughly in the plan and
Is that this?
It is. I did, I did email that plan. Yes, I did email that plan to the Board of Trustees. I know you didn't have much.
So restaurants, like restaurants currently now, like in Subway, they're closed.
Yeah, and my understanding is that most, if not all of the parks, the restaurants are also closed. We could, with, with the baseball practice, I guess it depends on, you know, well, with, with, when the games start, that will become a greater issue, definitely, than, you know, even with practice, you need to have availability of a restroom for somebody, somewhere to go to the restroom.
So both the spectators and the players.
Yeah, and we would definitely want spectators, ideally no spectators, just coaches and players in, in the practice phase.
Yeah, because the bleachers would be closed.
Yeah, and yeah, people, people would be encouraged to bring their own seating, or they can stand around the the fence, the outside of the fence spaced six feet apart.
So it'll be markers.
I mean, I'm just, no, that's a good question. I have good questions and it's going to be very difficult, and that's where we really need people to be responsible and well, unfortunately, I, I agree with you. But that's, we heard that claim many, many times. If we can do this, we can be responsible. You don't need to be a big brother, but now prove it. Show us that.
Or we could just wait and open it up and what's next, June, July?
June 1st.
That's when the next phase is supposed to start anyway.
Yeah, that would be phase two, step two would begin on June 1st. And I just I'll be quiet and allow the world to say something.
My question is, what churches are you going to think about this?
Churches are, their occupancy is based on, for a large church would be 10% of occupancy, which I'll just give an example of facility, a sports facility, and there are some large churches, maybe not as large as the sports facility, but their 10% of occupancy is 180 people, which frankly, that's kind of a, that number is a bit cringe worthy. But we do limit churches to the intel and not just churches, but any outdoor gathering to 200, or I'm sorry, to 50 people until June 1st.
And what happens then?
On June 1st, that number would increase to 250 outdoor, outdoor gatherings. Indoor would still be based on occupancy, but it would go to 25%. That, that was discussed and removed.
That was disgusting if they stay in their car. But some churches even called and talked to us that that made them nervous. How would you, you know, make sure people stayed in the car? Or then would it become, would they come in and sit, sit on their tailgate, you know, listening to church and just be a bigger control issue is what some of the larger churches had mentioned.
So I'm still just kind of wondering why seems like we're sampling out individual groups and letting them have favors. By making this change in midstream, when it's only two weeks away till we stick with the plan?
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
I don't know. I just, somehow this doesn't, we should have the rest of the board talk. I've been more than halfway.
Well, I think we have this.
Are the rest of the board hearing all this?
Yes, we're hearing it.
Yep, we're hearing it.
Kathy Hill, do you have comments?
Let me add, I'm sorry, Kathy, I didn't mean to. Did you have comments?
No, I was just, I mean, the, the part of the difference is, you know, I agree with you a little bit, Dr. Jackson, except for, you know, the churches can have outside. I know you can't control it. It's just kind of like you have to let them be responsible, just like we're doing if we do with the, the athletics. But the athletic people have brought plans on how they plan to do it. Whereas none of the other entities have. And I don't know, I just, you know, I still think, I'm not sure, Kansas City opens theirs, what, up on the 15th? You know, our next phase is June 1st, and I think it could do maybe.
So you, you cut out Kathy.
Couldn't hear you.
No, I think we need to make it, I, I don't know. It's something I still need to think about. Oh, okay, sorry. We need to look at this. Are they, are they wanting us to make changes sooner? And I guess, I guess that's not my question. I guess that's my question is, are they requesting that we make it sooner?
This proposal is to make it Friday this week as opposed to making it two weeks.
Yeah, and I should add, under the current plan, the version four of the plan would not allow youth sports to start until June 15th at the earliest. So the board also, well, you have all the options you wish to have, but another option the board could consider is starting, allowing practice or games before June 15th, because that's what's in the current reopening plan. Did that make sense? No practices even until June 15th?
But we could have practice start June 1st and then games the 15th, right?
This is Dr. Hills. I think it's hard to make one thing fit every single business and entity and all of that. I do agree that, you know, there's got to be some sort of personal responsibility. And you know, I don't guess I have a problem with starting practicing June 1st as far as that goes. Who will, will there be anybody that will kind of monitor in the ballparks and the complexes, the social distancing, or are we just going to leave it totally 100% up to them to be responsible? But I agree, not everyone is responsible when you let them out in public, so.
You know, the, the answer to that is we, it, that's and I'm sure you know, that's impossible to monitor every activity that's going in in our jurisdiction. We have to, I, I think what will be most effective, frankly, is the community is going to police itself in that if I don't, if I have a kid that's in wanting to play baseball and I don't feel like his health is, they have any concern about his health, he's not going to play in that league. And if I go to a restaurant and they have a dining room full of people and they're paying no attention to some, some guidance that is there to protect me as their customer, I'm not going to go to that restaurant and I'll never return. So I think the community is gonna, not only will they let us know, but they'll let business owners know, look, if you don't care about me, I'm shopping somewhere else. And I think the same would apply with youth baseball.
Dan, this is Paula.
Baseball people are going to change anything.
They're not. Baseball's not going to change.
Hey, Dan, this is Paula, or to whomever I'm addressing, I'm addressing this comment. I guess you, I, I agree that it's not reasonable at all to think that we're able, going to be able to do any monitoring, but don't you think it's reasonable that in these plans that these youth sports groups have that they themselves have interjected in their plans, that they are going to have people monitoring? And because I don't think, I looked at it real quick, but I didn't see any of that.
That was definitely part of the discussion yesterday, and I will, I will tell you, another factor is their insurance company. You know, insurance companies are, I imagine they're in a, in a tough time right now, you know, if if businesses totally ignore orders that are in place, it would seem to me that they're assuming a lot of liability. That's a legal question. I don't have the answer to, but anyway, I think that will be another policing.
They're considering these organizations as being the businesses and their insurance company, nobody, nobody. They can control anything that somebody comes there can, is doing, right? Now I'd be controlling who's sick or not sick coming to the ball field. So how's the insurance company even care about this?
Well, this is Jen Snyder. Dr. Jackson, to answer your question, I think that my understanding is that most organized sports leagues, be it amateur or professional, in this case, it would be amateur children, are nearly all of them have insurance policies for their practices, meaning how they, how they run their association group. And by renting a ball field and having practice on that ball field, they have to have certain levels of insurance in order to move forward. Now, there's no legal requirement that every sports league that your five year old is in has to have insurance. That's a choice they have to make. That's how they choose what leagues their children play in. But I, I agree with Dan that large organizations like the one that we spoke with earlier this week, certainly based on the scale of what they're talking about and, and other individuals that have contacted the health department this week certainly do have that in place to protect their facility, let alone visitors to the facility. And, and as far as policing goes, what I can tell you is that in other states, those states and some cities are requiring at job sites, professional job sites, for there to be a, a construction supervisor and their sole job is to monitor the health of the workers and be the health, the arm of the health department, and it's required for multimillion dollar construction jobs. So it's, it is available in concept, but the board could consider asking those sports leagues to have plans and have those plans approved. That's, that's a deviation, but that's something that you could. So that way you can talk to groups and if they're taking the level of responsibility of some that have approached the health department this week and have created pretty extensive plans, I think they're well invested and they've thought through the problems. They've thought through the different issues. And, and they may be ready to take on the responsibility. That's something that the board could consider asking of those groups.
So this insurance that they have, what is insurance for?
Well, I can't speak to everyone. In general, it likely protects the, the athletes from coaches that may not coach them appropriately or unsafely. I can speak to swimming, that swimming liability coverage mandates that the teams have coverage to protect their athletes from, it's called safe sports. So the athletes are safe physically, emotionally, physically from any kind of unwanted approach. Okay? So I can speak to that organization. Most likely, those insurance policies also cover the actions of coaches when they are coaching, meaning if a child becomes injured, he runs into the wall of some sort. There's liability coverage for that. I would imagine that most groups that rent a facility are required to have their own liability coverage in addition to the facility policy.
The thing we were worried about that being together is COVID.
Of course, that's the second kind of.
Is COVID the reason we're worried about this? So are we trying to say that they have insurance that would cover? So if the same person got hit in the head with a bat?
Sure.
Okay, or they broke their leg running across the field. If they get COVID-19?
I don't know if insurance policies would cover if a child becomes exposed to a communicable disease while participating in that sport or in a tournament or in a league. That's something that each individual league would have to ask their insurance company, just as if every homes association has to ask their liability carrier if, what happens if someone uses our community pool? And they contract COVID-19, that's something that businesses have to ask their own providers. That's not something that we can mandate as a health department. It certainly seems like a valid business practice that everybody who has posting public needs to think about seriously.
So that's maybe.
How would that be any different than if they had an outbreak of like head lice in baseball due to the use of the helmets? That, that's just a risk you take when you're, when you're playing.
No, what I think, what I think the comment originated from is that we are in a brand new world because most insurance carriers have not dealt with an epidemic of this sort, right? And if their policyholders call them and say, can I host a volleyball tournament? Their insurance carrier will say, probably as long as you follow local and state guidance from your health departments. And so the insurance, if this guidance from your health departments. And so the insurance, if this vicious cycle, Dr. Hill, so the insurance companies will kick back to the health department and say, you all decide what you think is healthy, and if you think it's healthy, then we'll cover that for our policyholders. So there's no, there's no correct answer here. I do think that some national sporting organizations are recommending that their participants sign waivers. So they're asking parents to sign waivers that say, look, your kids wanna participate in sports, you understand that we can't control COVID-19, you put your kid on the baseball field and he contracts this illness, God forbid, they're recommending that parents sign up on those waivers. That's not something we can require as a health department, but I think parents who are listening to the call should anticipate that coming from their organizations. I would not be shocked if that occurs.
So what about if a coach becomes positive?
Well, I would think that a plan that is presented to the health department would require that coaches report to the league and then the league direct those coaches to follow guidance about quarantine and isolation. I mean, I think that's why we ask for these plans. It's twofold. It is, it is so that parents know that, or church attendees or whoever we're talking about knows that their organization has thought about what's, what they're going to do. And it's also for the organization to have thought through the, the decision tree, right? Because if they just say, oh, well, we'll figure out when that happens, then we don't feel like they're prepared.
Okay, so if we did open this up, we have two, two groups have made a plan, right? But there's many other groups besides those two? And I don't know, are all the people gonna have a chance to make a plan in the next three days? Uh, they, I think they're pretty motivated. Some have already done so, uh, some, some have shared plans that could probably are, are not bad, but could use a little tweaking. One thing I think we need to do when we review the plans is make sure that they understand that adheres to this plan does not guarantee that, you know, people will not, well, not become infected with COVID-19. But, um, I want to clarify something I said earlier. It, we're not gonna not do enforcement, um, because there will be cases where people will be very egregious in their non-compliance, and in those cases, we have and will take the action necessary to make sure that they're complying with these orders. But we'll, we'll find out about those from complaints, and we do get complaints from people who, especially food establishments, they're complaining about food establishments not adhering to requirements, so we investigate those complaints, and if they're found to be valid, we notice a violation and let them know that if they continue to not comply with the order, we will take all the legal action that they're able to us. Do you have to go witness them not complying? Uh, you know, a lot of times it's on social media. And it's pretty easy. That's, we've even seen on television, on the news. It's like, wow, that's pretty obviously not complying with our order. And it's pretty easy.
Hey, Dan, oh, this is Paula again. I'm not, I'm not sure how we got off on the insurance thing, but, uh, my issue or my point was knowing that we can't go out there and monitor those sporting events and make sure everything is, is, uh, copacetic. Because we talked about how the community and the organizations and individuals should be taking personal responsibility. It seems to me that the group or groups that are organizing those sporting events and that are onsite with those children and/or parent, whatever, that they are the ones that should be taking the responsibility or making sure that they are in compliance with, um, the health, the health and safety plan. And I think that could be written into their plan. I think they should tell us that yes, they are going to have people, X number of people that are going to be monitoring this, this, and this, because I, you know, when you're dealing with children, I'm, I'm sorry, but you know, those kids are out of control, so, um, they need to specify, they need to specify who's gonna be responsible in their organization for monitoring what's going on when the activity.
I agree, Paula. I think that's a great idea, and I think we could even ask that they provide appropriate signage and to make it clear to the people who are, you know, visiting the field or complex that what's expected of them. And yeah, definitely, I think they, uh, as a league or as a organization need to take that responsibility for making sure people comply. I agree.
This is Dr. Hills. I agree too with that, and just a side note on what Jen was saying. Coming from, um, you know, I have two kids who are very active in sports, competitive and otherwise, and I do believe every sport either one of my kids were in, there was always some sort of waiver about holding the organization responsible. So I do think anybody who's involved with those types of things will definitely, uh, come through with the waivers, whatever. But I do like the fact that they provide the signage about, you know, social distancing, not here, not there, whatever, so.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, in their original plan, and I didn't see it in their current plan, the, uh, organization that came forward with a very professional plan, um, did have waiver documents. I don't know, my, it's a Jen question, uh, whether or not we can require them to have waiver. We can't, can't do that. So, uh, but we can certainly recommend it. Are these people expected to have a mess? They certainly, that's what's in the requirements for physical, the physical distancing requirements. In addition to the distancing, there are some very specific guidance in there about masks and, um, cleaning and sanitizing. It's actually defined in the plan, um, at the bottom of each table, at least the first three tables. The physical distancing requirements definition, and I'll just go ahead and read it. Maintaining at least six feet of physical distancing from others, washing hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds as frequently as possible and supplementing with hand sanitizer, covering coughs or sneezes into the sleeve or elbow, not hands, not shaking hands, appropriate use of face cover is consistent with guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and regular cleaning and sanitizing of high-touch surfaces. Those are all in the definition of physical distancing requirements. You know, man, it's the appropriate use of face covers. I think, okay. All right. Anybody else want to comment about this? So I guess the question comes down to, do we want to make a motion about this or we want to think about this more till the next meeting? Because this has all been thrown at us here all at once. I'm not, I personally don't feel comfortable with it, but.
I don't either. I don't either. I go back to my, what's best for the patient. The last thing.
Next meeting's a week from tonight.
It's gonna be a big meeting.
Yeah.
We, I personally just, yeah. Unless somebody wants to make a motion, I'm gonna hear a motion to table it.
Before we do that, could I, um, Kathy Wright, I wasn't clear on what, what you, what your issue was or what problems you had.
Um, just that. The reason we're doing this to maybe move it up is because some people are requesting it. That's what I'm getting. It's not, I mean, we didn't.
It wasn't our idea.
Wasn't our idea. And, and, no, it wasn't.
Wasn't our idea to do what?
To move up this date, to make this exception. That's what we already had.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
The, the, what they want to move it up to, this Friday for practice.
I don't think that's reasonable.
Okay, and so, so that's why we're doing it.
I'm gonna make a motion, I'm, this is Dr. Hills, I'm gonna make a motion that we table it until next week's meeting. It sounds like most or all of us aren't comfortable and we kinda got it, you know, thrown at us all at once and, you know, what's one more week, I guess? I realize the 15th is this, is it this week? But.
Is this Friday?
I don't know. Is the following Tuesday.
Yeah.
So I, I make a motion that we table it till then.
A second. A second, this is Paula.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of tableting the motion?
Aye.
Kathy Wright?
Aye.
Hills?
Aye.
Dr. Hills, you already voted, right?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Okay, so unanimous to table. Quick question, Jen. The, uh, practice under the current plan would start June 15th. Best case is that still, that still applies, correct? We have not changed our plan that we had. If there was some change, okay, then. So, okay, perfect.
There's not, not May 15th.
Not May 15th, right?
Okay, next on the agenda is any discussion about the Quack Penny Fair.
This came from me. I, I was called by Rick Hill, who's the president of the fair this year. And I've known him for a long, long time.
High school.
You did?
He's in my class.
Oh, okay. And, um, he, I know him from, um, I mean, he knew I was on board, and then I'm also, I have, I'm on the health board too, I mean, the
Fair Board.
Fair Board. And so anyway, so he called me. So I told him I had no idea, but I would bring it to you all. And the question is, is there any chance they'd be able to have the fair? As you all know, when you put on a fair, you know, you, you book the carney and you book the this and that rodeo, whatever, and that has to be done out ahead, and it's like the third week of July, 22nd through the 26th, I believe. So anyway, that's the question. I know the Amelia Earhart Festival or whatever they have in Atchison, it's a big deal. Big moneymaker for the town. They canceled it, and I don't know exactly, do you know when they have that? It's in the summer.
Yeah, yeah.
Most every horse show that I know about this summer has been canceled already.
Oh, has it?
I don't know about the Missouri State Fair. Has that, has anybody said anything about that? There's other county fairs around us, I don't know what's happening, but our National Convention, ADMA Convention, for, been canceled?
Yes, that's right.
So I don't know. What does anybody want to say, besides me?
Do we know, um, what other surrounding counties are doing as far as the fairs go? I mean, I know a lot of big events like that are being canceled. I just am curious.
I got a news alert on my phone that said Cass County canceled their county fair.
I did ask the Clay County Director earlier tonight, this is Mary Jo, and he said, they never have a county fair. I didn't know that. No, they don't have to worry about that.
There's several counties down.
I know Wyandotte County has one.
Marty and.
Oh, gosh. Maybe do some counseling.
So Missouri State Fair, it's still scheduled as of now. There are, the fairgrounds is closed though through May 10th.
The fairgrounds is closed?
Missouri State, fairground events canceled through May 10th, Missouri State Fairgrounds.
Really?
But they're, August is when the fair.
I don't know, like, I'm, no, whenever you have an event like the fair, you probably have to land earlier versus later, but what is the latest that they would be able to put the fair on that they would need to know the date by?
I don't know. I didn't ask him that.
That's a good question. Ask them then for further discussion. You know, another meeting.
Yeah, I'll call Rick tomorrow and ask him that.
I mean, social distancing at the fair, they just, that seems kind of like the oxymoron. They're just saying with little tape on the floor.
Yeah, that's what you make friends, that's right.
I don't see that happening.
Do we want to provide?
I don't know how in good sense you can, I don't know how in the name of good sense you can have hundreds of people out in a field where a county fair is held or a state fair for that matter, and you can't, you could not control social distancing, you cannot control, you, we all know that you can't have a fair of any sort like that and say, well, you can only let, you know, 10 people in, or you can only let 25 people in. And, and you have to, you know, or you can only let that many in at one time. That's clearly not doable, right?
Have you been to the Black County Fair, Paula?
I'm sorry?
Have you been to the Black County Fair?
No, but I've spent many a year at the Missouri State Fair.
I also wonder what some of the bands and so forth that they would get, like for the band stands, maybe they aren't even ready to go out there and perform. I mean, that's always something to look at when we're deciding this from that side as well.
What'd she say?
She's, don't know. Be ready, anybody would be ready for it. For the fair, anybody was gonna perform, is that what you're talking about, performance?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, because a big part of the fair, it's not only, you know, the tractor pulls and all that stuff, but, you know, I know for me, a lot of people go for the music and maybe, you know, even those bands aren't the ones that are there year after year after year. It would be nice to know if they are even willing to come out and perform.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Find out more info and.
Yeah.
See you next week on that.
The very last thing that I have on the agenda was, uh, I missed it, um, we, you know, instead of celebrating Nurses Day, you know, Secretaries Day, what all that we use, they have a little something that we do for all the employees for employee appreciation. And that's all passed by, um, due to distracted management team from COVID. In the past, the, you know, just as a show of appreciation, the board I know has given, like last year they gave a $35 gift card to each one of employees. Um, I don't know if it's, the board would still like to do that or delay that, wait, or have any discussion about that this evening?
I think it would be nice, of course, to go ahead and add.
Okay, so it would be a nice mid-crisis gesture.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, it's at the end of this thing, I wanted to figure out whatever we talked about before.
What kind of a gift card did you get?
It's just a form of the bank.
Oh, I didn't wear that. I've never done that.
So you have someone to make a motion about that?
I'm hoping we can get a $50 gift card. Every person under stress with this whole deal.
Give us a second.
I second every $50 gift card, this Dr. Hills.
Okay, anybody else want to talk, discussion?
Good idea.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye, Dr. Hills.
Okay, Kathy Hill?
Aye.
Paula?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
All right. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you all very much.
I'm a weird girl.
All right. At 9:20. All right.